Hearing notices were provided. First notice on Wednesday, October 14, 2015, and second notice on Tuesday, October 20. For the record, today is Thursday, October 22, 2015, and the time now was 5:30 PM. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 189-33, which is the only item on the agenda this evening, which is an act to adopt the proposed GMHA fee schedule submitted to Eileas Lutur in Guam by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, proposed hospital rate adjustments to reflect current year Medicare reimbursement, and the addition of 14 new fees and services as provided pursuant to Section 80109 of Chapter 80, Division 4, Title 10, Guam Code annotated. I'd like to recognize the Vice Chairman of the Committee, Senator Tony Adet.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Senator Tommy Morrison, thank you very much, and Senator Michael Siniklas, thank you very much for joining us this evening. I'd like to now ask the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority to please come forward. We have the CEO and also the CFO here with us. Thank you very much for being here this evening. We did receive the submission, the proposed hospital rate adjustments, on October 13 of this year. And so pursuant to statute, we have 45 days to either approve or disapprove the proposal. And so we wanted to ensure that we give the public another opportunity to provide testimony. And so, and I know that pursuant to the rules as well is that you had indeed had this public hearing at the hospital. And so this is just another opportunity for the public to provide input, so we wanted, so that's why we're here this evening. So what we'll do is just maybe have you give a brief summary of what the fees, the adjustments are, and what the impacts would be, and then from there, we would invite members of the public to provide their testimony. Okay? Ms. Benita?
Okay. I prepared something here, so maybe let me just read this, and then I can go to the impact. Buenos dias, Chairman Rodriguez, and committee members. Thank you for expeditiously scheduling this public hearing for GMHA's proposed rate adjustment. Ten GCA Section 80109 gives the authority to GMHA to set its rates and to adjust its methodology for calculating and adjusting fees in order for GMHA to fund its operations, capital expenditures, and other obligations. It is well documented that GMHA has been operating at a deficit for many years, and that rate adjustments need to be made to account for the increase in healthcare costs. As stated in the Office of Inspector General's report, which was released in December 2014, I quote, "GMHA has not adjusted its fees since the early 90s. Current fees are not sufficient to cover operating costs. Simply put, we cannot reasonably expect the hospital to continue to provide quality healthcare services without this much-needed rate increase. GMHA proposes using Medicare APC, which is the ambulatory payment classification, rates for pricing of procedures as a benchmark for determining the rate adjustments. This benchmark was recommended by our consultant, whom the hospital contracted, to review GMHA's Charge Master, which is GMHA's fee schedule. Medicare APC rates are significantly lower than most rates. The processing of claims by Medicare for both outpatient and inpatient requires that claims information be consistent for the Medicare administrative contractor payment logic. With the implementation of electronic transaction sets about 10 years ago, most of the claim and submission regulations are the same for GMHA as they are for other hospitals that are paid under the APC and DRG, which is Diagnosis Related Group. We use the same code sets in compliance with the claims processing requirements. Other payers also use and apply the regulatory guidance of their standard claims requirements, typically modeled after the APC and the DRG guidance from Medicare. GMHA needs to adjust its rates to at least align charges to Medicare APC rates, which are among the lowest, if not the lowest, rate in the healthcare industry. Thus, the rationale to raise GMHA's rates to at least Medicare APC rates is reasonable." Senators, based on the reasons stated earlier, I ask that you approve GMHA's rate adjustment requests. Situs mafsi. So in the package that was submitted, there was the determination of what this impact was, would have been if we had submitted, if we had applied the Medicare rate back to October 1, 2014, using the utilization from October to August. That was, the impact was about $14 million. That's a gross revenue, but you have to take into consideration that about half of that is the 3Ms, and which we are paid per deemed, but there's certain charges there that are outpatient, and the outpatient, we are paid on a percentage basis. And up to about June, Medicare was paying us about 97%. Right now, it's about 85, so it changes, the rate changes. And then, you know, nominal portion of that utilization is the insurance companies. So I had also looked at the utilization for the whole fiscal year, and even with that, looking at it, the utilization is not that, I consider it not very significant. So the impact on the rates, I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt them.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Manglona. I want to recognize Mr. Lewis, Ted Lewis, the CEO, and also Dr. Lozama, if you would like to join also, you're welcome to come up, and thank the other staff of the hospital. Thank you for being here as well. So if you have anything else, then I'll open it up to the senators for their questions.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. Ms. Benita did a great job of giving an overview on this. I would categorize it as being an attempt by us to be reasonable, because many of these rates that we've outlined have been unreasonable. And some of them show huge percentage increases from what it is now, but an example would be an intubation, which we're suggesting the rate be $160-some dollars, but we currently have a rate of $5.08. And when you look what happens in an intubation, and several staff are working furiously in the emergency room over someone that's in real trouble, and a tube is put in to their throat, you know, the tube probably costs $5, you know. So we've had a rate, in some areas, that's been very unreasonable. So what we're talking about is trying to get a reasonable rate. And the methodology that we've outlined, I think, is a good one, so that, you know, we use that APC as a guideline, and anything that's below that, you know, merits some look. And also, I will say that, you know, we've had, we've had a very positive response, we've had questions, and we've been able to answer them. And in the process of doing this too, I want to say that we all have learned a bit more, and it's given us an opportunity to talk to some of our clinicians down on the units and in the emergency room who are giving care every day. And we have great people doing that. So in summation, my feeling is, you know, we're wanting to have something that's reasonable, and I think that's what this is about.
You know, just one quick question before I pass it on. The hospital has the authority now to raise these, raise rates, 5%.
5%.
5%, you know, and you can do it without going through any process, right?
Correct.
So how has, are any of these items here, the over 400 items that you have, it's 400, right, over 400 items that you have, have you done analysis of maybe which items there, or any of these items were ever raised, you know, with that 5%?
The 5% happened in April, so that would have been, you know, immediate across the board, the charges that we have.
So prior to that, though, prior to doing a 5%, because you're saying in April, you had raised it 5%?
We raised it 5%.
So prior to that, when was the?
The last increase, I understand that there was a 5% increase in 2010, and that was it, that no other adjustment has been made.
Okay. Okay. And so, and this is across the board, in all these, in all these items, in April, there was a 5% increase, and then now we're looking, increasing it beyond the 5%, right?
Yeah. And, you know, the 5% was, that's very nominal, the impact on that is based on the utilization, you know, what I had looked at is about maybe $3 million up to August.
Okay. Okay. You know, we have others that want to testify, maybe I can call them out, it's only, it's only Mr. Larson, Jeff Larson is the only one, and then from there, we can open up the questions, right? Mr. Meniola, did you want to testify as well?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Larson, did you want to do an oral testimony?
So are we excused?
No, just hang on.
Well, that's the pro side of it. Our side, obviously, is much different, and with all due respect to the administration of the hospital, the rate increases that are being proposed are significant, and in our analysis, it shows a more substantial increase. And you have my written testimony, I hope, at this point, but there are just a couple of points that I would like to stress. So one thing that should be noted is the 5% annually, and healthcare trends generally are increasing between 5 and 7%. So an annual increase of 5% is pretty much in line with what most hospitals and healthcare providers adjust annually. That's also mostly in line with what health insurers provide us in terms of their healthcare trends as well. One thing that should be noted, and I also noted this, but GMH frequently adds new services to their Charge Master, and when they add those new services, those aren't at 2010 rates or 2001 rates, those are at current market rates. And so, for example, if you were to get a chest pacemaker, what they had as a chest pacemaker in 2010, they would add a new chest pacemaker at a different rate, which is the latest model, and that latest model would be added to the Charge Master at the current rates, meaning to say, as they add new fees, they're keeping pace with market rates. So that's something to consider. When we did the analysis on our membership, which Take Care represents nearly 35,000 members and over 300 businesses in the community, and I think when we applied our analysis, it represents 191% increase over current fees, which in our estimation includes, or would translate to around a 26% to 28% increase in insurance premiums. So I would argue that that's a very significant increase for working families. Individuals, just based on current Guam, what we call per member per month premium averages, that's about $1,000 per individual, and between $3,000 and $4,000 per family annually just for this increase. That's substantial, senators, and I think that needs to be considered. A couple of other things that should be noted, and Ted correctly points out that there are substantial fee increases, but there are some fees that are increasing by a staggering 500 to 2,500%, and clearly, something more should be done about either the increases all at once, or having those ginormous increases, you know, impact rates for insurance customers, which will primarily be the impact, because as you know, Medicaid, the 3Ms, if you will, pay a set amount. So really, the rates are going to impact the private insurance companies, commercial insurance companies. One of the other points I want to make, mention is, of the fees that are increasing, a substantial number of those fees are provided by a third party, not by the hospital. And I think that needs to be really considered and looked at, because if those fees are being provided by a third party and passed through GMHA's Charge Master, there's no oversight or accountability of those fees. And to my knowledge, there's been no RFP or any kind of, or any kind of oversight of those fee increases at those third-party providers. And I think that-
Can you give an example of the third-party providers?
Guam radiology consultants would be a good example. So of the fees that were noted, there's probably two or three pages of radiology and nuclear medicine fees, and those fees aren't provided by the hospital, or those services aren't provided directly by the hospital. Nuclear medicine, for example, is provided by Guam Medical Imaging Consultants. And so that's something that really needs to be considered, and something that, if GMH intends to pass those fees through, then what's the reasonable market rate for those services? Is the question we should be asking ourselves. So those are just a few of the points, but again, the characterization of this as reasonable increases, I think, isn't exactly the case. And when you look at the impact to commercial insurance ratepayers, premiums are going to go up substantially, and I don't think we can, you know, afford to pass those increases on. And effectually, those people that can't afford those premiums will become Medicaid payers, and those are the people that, quite frankly, aren't paying the bills now. And that's the death spiral that we all want to avoid.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll get back. So Vice Chairman, you have any quick question or comments, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Benita, how much did you say you expected you were going to be able to raise from these new rates?
Well, we did a calculation back in August, it was about 40 million gross. Sorry. Yes. So, but I did another calculation based on the, actually based on the, you know, year-to-date And the impact on that is about 24 million gross, but half of that is the 3Ms, about 13 million is the 3Ms, and then about 3 million of that is insurance companies, based on utilization.
And how realistic is it that you're going to realize that, that 24 million or the 14 million?
I'm not saying whether it's realistic or not, I'm just, I'm just, you know, looking at the utilization. These are the rates that our consultant recommended that we follow, and when you look at the rates that had been set many, many, you know, years ago, it's, it's, you know, we're following 1992 rates.
And Dr. Lozama can correct me, but I've been following the hospital for the last 10 years.
Okay.
I've been going to board meetings, and I know that in 2005, and 2008, and 2009, and 2010, there were noticed hearings of rate increases that the hospital was proposing. Maybe neither one of you were involved with the hospital at the time, but I know that many, I wasn't in the legislature in 1991, I only came here 2005, but I can tell you from personal experience, because I've attended them, I've sent staff to attend them, there have been increases for various charges, sometimes as many as 20 to 30 different things are on the, on the, on the agenda for rate increases on-
Those, I think, Senator, you know, those are not rate increases, those are new fees that are being, being presented. So they have, there's a requirement that every quarter, you have to, you have to have a public hearing on those. So those are like, you know, when they're buying new supplies, they add that to the Charge Master, so it's not a rate increase. So my understanding is, you know, the staff here could correct me if I'm wrong, that the last rate increase was the 5% in 2010, and there hasn't been any rate increases. But, but, you know, like Senator said, there are new fees that, I mean, Jeff, there are new items that are added to the Charge Master, those are priced at what cost it was purchased at, and, you know, plus, plus a certain amount for freight, and that is based on the Deloitte and Touche methodology back in 19, or, you know, I think in the 90s, when they contracted Deloitte to do a fee, I mean, fee setting for the hospital.
In order to make the, make up the difference in the hospital, to try to figure out how to pay for the operating costs of the hospital, is it really the fees, or is it the ability or the competence of the hospital to collect the fees?
There's a component, you know, the fee is a component. I mean, if you are undercharging, if you are undercharging, and you're not, you're not covering your costs, then of course, no matter-
All right, let's take an example, just from your first page. For emergency room, currently, currently, and hopefully, I don't have to wait for two weeks to get an answer on this one, what is your collection rate on your emergency room charges?
I'd have to get back to you on that, I cannot just, you know, give you the information.
Are you getting 100% of what you're charging in the emergency room? As I understand it, that's the big-
Of course not. You, you, you know, you look at those people that can't pay, the, we have a lot of compact impact migrants that don't pay.
There's a lot of people that don't pay, it doesn't have to be just one, one-
There is, but there's also people that pay.
But I'm just saying, just looking at your, does it really matter whether or not you're charging $5, or you're charging $129 for someone, something?
I think it does matter.
If you're not collecting, if you're not collecting the $5-
Well, there is, I mean, I can't, I can't-
Your loss is going to be greater when you start charging 129 for the cost.
Senator, I can't, I can't speak for the past, but we are making efforts in, you know, addressing the collection efforts at GMH, where, you know, we have an RFP right now that, you know, it was supposed to have been submitted last week, but there was, there was a lot of interest, so we extended it for online services that would target self-pay patients to, you know, they can, they can go online and, and look at their accounts, or anybody for that matter.
The RFP for collections has been going out since 2010, okay? And it's now 15 going on 16. I'm just saying, if you guys could first get certified billers and get your billing system together and collect-
We are, we are working on that, Senator, we are working on that.
I understand, but what I'm trying to say is-
And we cannot wait for, wait to have the certified biller first, and then wait for this and wait for that. We have, we're working all of it, we're tackling it from all different angles on how to improve the hospital.
I would, I would be supportive of some increases if I thought that you would be collecting. But what was your collection rate this last year of all your billables? 140, of 144 that you were going to get, how much did you collect?
We collected, the collection rate for, I mean, for last year is 80 million, but then you have to take into consideration, there's contractual adjustments for Medicare from the 3Ms, which about, you know, 80, about 88 million of the billings that we did last year was attributed to Medicare, I mean, the 3Ms.
So what was supposed to be the gross revenue for the hospital? What were you anticipating?
The gross, the gross that we did for 2015 is about 100, closer to about 160 million.
And you collected how much?
We collected about 80 million, but, but, you know, the collection on that 80 is, part of that is receivables from the past.
Some of that 80, so it's even lower, is what you're telling me?
Well, it's the same, I mean-
What I'm trying to get to, Benita, is-
I mean, there, you know, the receivables are out there.
What you're going to be showing is that your, 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 your collection rate's going to be even lower. Right now, you're collecting 50% of what you're, what you're billing, is what you're saying, 160 and 80, all right? Now we're going to bump it up, and we're going to say, next year, we're going to have billables of $210 million, and I'm still collecting 80.
You know what, Senator? I understand what you're saying. We are working on trying to beef up on the collection. We are working on an RFP for a call center, so people can just, you know, there'll be people dedicated to just calling for people to, you know, for, for patients to pay their bills. And one of the recent changes that we implemented-
But as I understand from the insurance companies, your, your problem is that your, your billing system is not clear and, and fulfills their requirements, which requires certified billers to know what numbers to put, input, so they can accept it.
So you're telling me that those, those employees at GMH, they don't know what they're doing? They were able to bill about $160 million in FYE 2015.
And they were able to challenge half of it because they were improperly billed?
I don't think so. You know what, they, what they do is, when they have high bills, they send it off island to scrub, to scrub those claims so they don't pay.
And if you had certified billers-
But the same charges, the same charges, if it doesn't fall under that threshold, they pay it. But that's, that's, you know, that's their business practice. And of course, you can't blame them for, you know, not, you know, not wanting to pay because they have to look at their bottom line.
All right, just, just on one, maybe two examples, on trying to see where you're at with billables. Have you certified any of your billers?
We are working on that, it doesn't happen overnight. We, we have someone that are taking the test, we have materials that we've, that, you know, we've ordered, they're getting training right now.
So when do you expect that you will have one certified biller on staff?
We're waiting for them to pass, I mean, they've taken the test, we're waiting for the results. Hopefully, maybe somebody already passed it.
On the-
I mean, we can, we can just hire everybody and hire, you know, somebody from the states and bring them in, and all certified billers, but the last time that happened, back in a couple of years ago, you know, it didn't work. They had to redo all the billings. And guess who did, who had to redo the billings? It's just GMH staff.
How about electronically? Have you guys brought your computer system up to, up to the 21st century?
We are doing electronic billing, we are doing electronic billing, we are undergoing conversions right now. In fact, we did, we're doing payroll, we did the accounting, and then we're doing the, no, we're going live with payroll and HR November 6.
How about the charges that the doctors are running up on a daily basis, every three minutes, three seconds in the, for each one of these charges?
We are working on that.
Is there, is there some way where they can, where they can punch it in, and we know that it's code 2002990?
We are working on automating everything. Senator, you know what, you know, I just got to GMH, so give me a chance.
I understand. My problem, Benita, is that we've had a revolving door at there, and I have dealt with more CFOs and more CEOs than I have with colleagues at the legislature.
Okay, hopefully, I'll be there until-
There'd be more changes, I mean, I, I've even forgotten all the names over the last 10 years.
I'm there to help the hospital, and we have a lot of plans to help the hospital.
And I've been trying for 10 years to try to help you, help the hospital, so I'm trying to-
So give us an opportunity, this is, this is one of the, our plan is to right-size the fees at the hospital. What is unreasonable is to intubate a patient, $5, honestly, does it-
No, I fully understand that.
But, but the reference that, you know, that they're referencing is intubation. How many people do you need, how many nurses do you need to intubate a patient? Four nurses. And you think that $5 is reasonable?
I didn't, I didn't set, I didn't set the fee-
So that's why we-
And I'm not even saying that the 129 is unreasonable.
And that's why we're, that's why we're trying to set it.
What I'm, what I, what just on that, on that first, your, your CEO was the one that used intubation as an example, I didn't. I'm looking at your defibrillation. Is that to go in and have the two little chargers go down?
Yes.
By one person? And so the charge is going from 127 to 470?
Actually, that requires- That procedure requires nursing, anesthesiologist, and a cardiologist, and monitored bed. Senator, if I may just comment on some of the comments that you made earlier, just on, I know there was an oral testimony by Take Care regarding these charges that we're creating are really for outside service. That's not the intent, the intent is basically to establish in-house procedures when they go outside of the hospitals. When they go outside of the hospitals, it's up to the outside institution to establish their own charge because they're basically recognized as an independent facility, you know. So we don't create charges for the outside facility to, you know, charge the patient. It's a, it becomes the outside facility's bill, billings that handle the charges. So anyway, but, you know, I know that we don't have nuclear medicine, but we're looking at that. Some of the interventional procedures that they're, that he's mentioning here, we're starting to do many of those. That's why when you said that we had some fee increases in the past, and these are not some of the fee increases that could have been recognized to be, to be included in the 5%, because when we cleaned out that Charge Master and looked at what charges were there that we had not utilized, we recognized that these are the charges that we're going to be providing going forward and thus we, you know, we needed to have the increase. That's why it's going from, you know, 5% being, I mean, again, you know, maybe somebody just never saw intubation as $5, but some of these procedures that are introduced, that are being introduced here are new procedures, which we're looking at, at providing on, and some of them we are currently providing, but unfortunately from the Charge Master's review and as we clean it out, we're recognizing that they're undercharged. So that's why you see the increase and not, and that's why it was not included in some of the 5% adjustments. Now, with regards to increasing, you know, the, you know, the, the fees, there is a, there's a population of patients, centers that, that may pay this, you know, this value for the service that we provide. You know, there, the insurance company, company may not be necessarily impacted if we have some insurance contracts that we can work with, but there's a, you know, tour, medical tourism market that are here. And if you look at that, the community standard is 99%. You know, the center, 99% of, I mean, 95% of PFR is what they're charging in the community. What we're charging at GMH is less than Medicare rate. I mean, birthing, you know, medical, I mean, delivering babies at the hospital. So there are some basically market out there that may be impacted because we can't separately charge, we can create contracts for, you know, rates, but we can't separately set different rates for different payers.
I, I agree, but I'm, I'm a little concerned that you're saying to capture the increase that you could possibly get from anchor babies and parents that want to come here and have their children born here, you're going to make it impossible for anybody else to give birth to GMH.
I don't know, and I'm, I'm talking about some of the fees that we're looking at, not necessarily the anchor babies. Yeah. I'm talking about the fees that, that we're looking here.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but one of the things.
But these are, these are, I mean, whether they're.
You know, except for when they're drowning, the ones that are coming down here, a lot of them are coming down for the purpose of, of giving birth to their children here. So I'm just saying, as a one example, you're the one that used the tourism. I, I wasn't. I wasn't the one that used intubation from five, I, I'm shocked that it was $5. You know, but to go up 2,000%, ah, it's a whole other thing. But I'm just saying, I'm a little concerned that what we're doing is we're going to make it to where we go, I mean, I, to what Mr. Larson's talking about, you're gonna, you're gonna make it so that nobody else is going to be able to have insurance because their charges to them are going to be so high that they're not going to be able to do it. As it is, not all of our employees are, are, are covering insurance. I can tell you that my staff, I made it a requirement. I told them I'd be damned if I was going to be the one senator that didn't have, I mean, that had staff that weren't going to have health insurance and, and go to the hospital and not be able to pay. So everybody's required to pay for insurance on, on their staff. But I'm just saying this, many of them would much rather not have to pay it, and if it's going to go up and they're not going to be able to afford it, then they're going to go and they're going to decide that they're going to apply for it under MIP.
You know, Senator, and, and, and I, I really don't believe that that's going to be the impact on the insurance company, you know. And when you look at the current, what's out there with the new hospital and the fees that they're, they may be charging, you know, the amount that we're talking about with this insurance company, I mean, this increase, if they're talking about the impact of these charges versus the impact of what the new hospital will be charging, you know, they're going to run out of business from the new hospital charge, charge.
I know, and I've, and I've spoken to, to the number of people.
And they still sign contracts with the new hospital.
And I've tried to remind everybody, please, I do not want to bookend my career in government with the purchase of hospitals. I was stuck in Washington DC for three months, working the deal in Congress to purchase the current, and the former MGM, MCM, and now the current GMH, raising that $25 million from the Congress in, in 1977, when I was governor's legal counsel. And I don't want the end of my career to be bookended by having to buy a hospital because you've completely priced yourself out and the other hospital, both of you trying to outdo each other in charging, and having the insurance companies decide it's cheaper to send all of us on a plane to either Los Angeles or to, or to Manila.
But is it fair, Senator, that we're going to be, be so undercharged further?
It's not so much that I'm saying undercharged. If, if you were collecting 100% of your billables and you're still short, I would say, yes, let's increase the rates. But if you're not collecting it and you're at 50% and you want to increase it so that you're going to be collecting 30%, what's the point?
My Speaker Cruz, could I shed a little light on the, the collections piece? Because the transparency reports for GMHA are out on their website and we've done some analysis on those transparency reports. So just to illustrate the, the insurance company's position, in, commercial insurance companies pay between 68 and 78 cents on every dollar billed at GMH. Medicare, 37 to 41 cents on every dollar billed. Self-pay, MIP, and others, it's generally between 17 and 19 cents. So just apply that logic to their analysis and you'll see that the disproportionate impact's going to be on commercial insurance companies because we pay double, in some cases triple and quadruple what non-insured or uninsured patients are paying. So with all due respect to their analysis, the folks that are paying the highest percentage of dollar billed are the commercial insurance companies. Those that are going to fill the brunt of the impact are going to be the commercial insurance companies. That's the facts. Look at the transparency reports. It's as simple as that.
Yeah, I have a question on that, and Ted, you'll, you'll have it after, is now, you know, in the past, we've never had another hospital to, to gauge ourselves, but, but, but we do now. And so I, I want to see, I want to know, and maybe the hospital can, can give me this answer, is what, I mean, you know, how does this compare to what the?
It would be the same.
Was that?
It would be the same.
With the same, and, and, and insurance companies do have contracts with, with, you know, with the new hospitals?
At a higher rate.
Well, to be clear, three insurance companies have contracts. This insurance company, Take Care, does not have contracts with the hospital for the fact that they're not accredited and their rates are high. So that's, you know, that's something that's different between us and the other three.
Okay, Ted.
Senator, can I say something? On the utilization for the rates that we're proposing right now, the, the impact on the, the four insurance companies is about 3.6 million for the whole year. So if you look at their premiums on all the chart, the insurance that they, they, they charge, is that really a significant increase? 3.6 million dollars impact on GMH just for the insurance? And this is based on utilization for FY 2015?
I, I think there's a lot of good points here and, but I, I think what, what's happened is most, most of this discussion is the overall, related to the overall billing and collection function, the overall revenue, the overall collections. I want to try to focus a little bit, the total number of items in our Charge Master, it's probably a little bit over 15,000, okay? So the number of items that we're talking about on, on this list are about 400 approximately, okay? And Benita's right in terms of that, you know, taking the analysis of the managed care in the last year, what, and these particular 400 items, what we experienced, what would, we would experience with changing to our proposed rate, that would be the impact. Now certainly Jeff and, and his comments, if we were to have this kind of an increase across the board on all of our 15,000 rates, of course, you know, they would have to raise their rates by 20%. But we're talking about just probably 3% of our total items that we charge for, okay? And these items, the, the 400 that we're talking about are primarily in the emergency room and radiology. There's, there's some in other areas, but we, the, these are just ones that have been unreasonably low. And, and again, I want to say that overall, yes, there, there, a lot of work's been done and there's a lot of things that can be done in the overall process, but we're just focused today on just 3% of the total.
So I want to add to Ted's comment that, you know, the, the, our consultant that reviewed the, the, the hospital's Charge Master identified this 402 items only. And even with that 402 items, maybe about half of that only are being utilized. So we are investing in, in, in our radiology supplies, we're hiring intervention or radiologists. So that's why, you know, these rates are important to have, you know, set it right. And, and it's like I mentioned in my testimony, we have been cited by the Office of Inspector General that, that the hospital's rate is outrageously low and we have to increase it.
Okay, can you provide us that analysis that you've mentioned earlier about where the impacts are going to be? If you can provide the committee that, so it's very important for us to take a look at. Senator Morrison, anything, Senator Uggan, you have any? Okay, Senator Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look at this list, I listen to the conversation, and I'm just very, very bothered because when I look at this list, I see one word: cancer. Needle biopsy pancreas, $384 is going to go up to $1,052, sticking it to the cancer X-ray aorta leg arteries, $50, goes up to $2,560, cancer. Radiology, 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 nuclear medicine, respiratory therapy, most likely for the guy with lung cancer. Laboratory. It may be the 400 items and only 3% of the total list, but it's all the cancer patients. And as the insurance companies will tell you, it's those mega catastrophic treatments that drive up the cost of everybody else's premiums. So yes, insurance rates will go up. And if you have cancer and you don't have insurance, you're going to have to pick between getting your biopsy or paying your mortgage. Am I incorrect?
I would say you are, Senator, because that's the current rates that's going out in the community.
Not, not right now in our hospital.
No, I understand.
Right now in my hospital, in my GMH, my GMH, the people at Guam's GMH, if I need to go and check if my pancreas has cancer, it's 348 bucks.
So.
So if I raise it to what the new hospital's charging because we're looking more on the bottom line versus on the patient, which I'm surprised I'm having this conversation, that guy's going to have to pick whether or not that extra 700 bucks is going to go to whatever else he was going to be able to pay for. And so I, you know, it kind of bothers me. I, I lost a grandmother to cancer, you know? Lucky thing she had Medicare and lucky thing she had insurance and it was all taken care of when she flew to the States, but I think about our people who have no coverage.
Senator, with all due respect, I mean, we're not trying to raise the, the rates on, on, on taking care of cancer patients, we're just trying to raise the rates to, to, to support the hospital for all other, for, for, to, to remain operational. I mean, these are the fees that would hopefully keep us, you know, operational for every other illness. I mean, this is not picking on cancer patients, this is just trying to establish a fee schedule where we are basically going to be paid for our costs. In, in, in chemoembolization, that's a $30,000 procedure in some instances, depending on what you, you use as a chemotherapeutic agent. And so if it costs the hospital that much and we can't raise the rates on cancer, then help us subsidize the hospital for cancer patients.
I, I, I'm okay with that, actually. I mean, you know, when you think about it, because I just, we just got through paying the refunds and I just got so many calls from people who had so many refunds garnished from the hospital. I mean, if you had a refund garnished because you had a, a $350 needle biopsy in your pancreas, you're going to get garnished three times as much with this, with this new fee schedule. And because we can garnish from tax refunds and because, you know, you don't pay your taxes, you know, they can go and put a lien on your property, I mean, this is a whole domino effect in our community. We're not just talking about trying to bring in more revenue for the hospital. I think this is where Vice Speaker Cruz is coming from. You know, when he talks about collections and billings and trying to bring in as much as we can of what we already have in place, I really think that that, I mean, Benita, I hear what you're saying about how you want to tackle, you know, different things from different angles, but I really think we should get the billings and collections, you know, at least up to 80% versus 50% before we begin something like this. This, this is just, this is way too high. I think it's in, it's in the wrong area. I think, I think that we need to get the billings and collections, you know, going at a better rate and, and we really need to think about how we're spending money. Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe I'm getting exercised over nothing, but how much of this are services that you're not currently providing right now?
Yeah, she's, she's correct, less than half.
Now I'm confused about what, the questions that I asked. How many of these services that are in here are you currently able to, are, that you're currently providing patients?
About half of that, and that's why I'm saying utilization. In fact, one of the testimony that we received from one of the insurance companies earlier, I looked at the, the, their example of, of the, the increase and I looked at their utilization and there was zero. So there was no impact on the, that in particular.
Because currently you're not offering that service and so you're not charging anybody for that service. But of the 50% that you are currently serving, services that you're currently providing, you're, you're figuring that it's going to cost them, the insurance companies, an additional 3.6 million?
Of the utilize, of the insure, I mean, the rates that, that we currently have, it's not the ones that we don't have, the ones, the utilization of the services that we have, that, that is what.
Maybe I better ask the question a different way. Of these 400 charges in here, how many of these 400 are you currently providing services at the hospital?
I, I.
I.e. you have a MRI machine that's working, a CT scan that's working so you don't need to send out everybody for their, for their, for their radiology things? What do you, what do you, or is this going to be charges of things that are, we're going to get a different bill now for new machines because we decide we have these charges and we're going to have to make, provide these services?
I think that's partly true that, you know, we, we have, we are investing in, in, I mean, radiology supplies that, that we don't currently charge right now and we will be charging. And we are hiring, I mean, we have some intervention or radiologists that, that are on board, so.
And I'm trying to figure out.
So on the 402, not, not all of it are being utilized. I mean, there's no utilization on it. So I do have the, the impact of, of how many per category of payers that are impacted. So I do have the, the impact of, of how many per category of payers that are impacted on, on these, on these fees.
So we're going, we're have, we're having new charges, 200 new charges, so that we can start new services at the hospital. Is that correct, Dr. Lozama? And I know that my good chairman here has asked on numerous occasions in the past, before this new hospital was built, have the two hospitals spoken and decided, we will take these services and you will take these services? And there's no need for us to duplicate services and compete for heart patients when one if I should have it? Or there's no need for us to invest in having cancer doctors or, or the, I forget, oncologists come to the, to GMH? When there's oncologist at the, at the new hospital, let them handle it. Become the birthing center. I mean, we're building you a $12 million new section.
Senator, that, that's really very premature right now to have a discussion because we don't really know, you know, whether, what Medicare certification or other, you know, certification they, they will get and when. Because currently they can't take care of Medicare, Medicaid and, and patients. So for those patients that need care now, they default to GMH.
It, it's a good question and I will tell you that we, we have started some discussion about some of these areas. And for instance, there's a couple areas where some really top flight specialists have been recruited by G R M C. And those are areas where we may be able to, it would take a bit of work, but we may be able to not provide that service, you know?
But not at this time. Not for the next year. That's, that's the bottom line. So for the next year, I mean, I'm going to stop that because, you know, we can't, they can't do Medicaid and M I P patients over there.
And, and where are these patients going to right now? And do we need to be investing in these new machines right now? Or can we wait the year? We've waited the last 10. Can we wait the year to see who's going to take care of what?
Let me give you the, the situation. I mean, right now they can see some private patients. They offer private patients these service. You bring it, it becomes a community sta, standard in the community. So what do we do now? Do we not offer it at GMH or, and when we have the potential capability of doing it because we have the expertise, but we just don't have the equipment and the charges that, you know, to, to support?
But as I understand, you, in some of these areas, you don't even have the expertise. You're, you're recruiting new, new doctors to...
No, we actually have, we, I mean, we don't have the machine. We may not have a nuclear machine and an MRI, but that's something that we have expertise in. It's just some of the, you know, it's having the machine and supplies that we're investing. But before we invest in those supplies and machine, we're also looking at, you know, establishing charges. So, I mean, yeah, part of our protocol is the hospital. If we're going to invest in a $200,000 equipment and supplies, we're going to have to create charges before they come here. Because as soon as they come in, we have no charges, we can't bill. So yes, these charges are created sometimes before we even see the service done because we have to order the supplies and those are big inventories.
And the theory of this, I think everyone agrees to, that, you know, it would be nice if the one hospital could specialize in these areas, the other these areas. From a practical standpoint, and I can speak from someone that started up a new hospital, you, it's, it's a challenge because if you start your process and you're, you're taking certain services and not doing them, you're, you're trying to build a, a product and if your customers think that you don't have a couple basic services, it hurts your overall program. So it's not that easy for them to say, okay, we won't provide that service. Again, theoretically, in the long run, once they get ramped up, I think you'll see some of that, but it, it's not that easy. And then conversely, from Guam Memorial, who's been here and has invested in a number of services, it's not that easy to say, we won't invest in this service going forward. Now, if we're not providing a service or if there's a physician who's in the process of leaving and we don't have anyone else, then, okay, that certainly can happen. But everyone agrees the theory of that is nice, but from a practical standpoint, it's not that easy to do it.
Okay. So, you know, before we close out, before I give you the opportunity to close out, I, I know Jeff, you said there's three insurance companies that have agreements with the, the new hospital. I know that, that Mr. Mendiola is here, but I won't force you if you don't want you to come up because this is, you know, this is going to be a very difficult decision that the legislature is going to have to make. You know, we, we understand where, where the hospital's coming from, you know, and these fees that have been, have been very low for a very long time, you know, that, that need to be adjusted. I think even in Jeff's testimony, the acknowledges that there's got to be some increase, right? And so where that, that increase is at, that's, that's the difficult part that we have to hear now, be able to go through because if no action is taken, then it's automatically adopted. But, you know, with the, with the, the other companies that have had the, this, this agreement with the new hospital, and Dr. Lozama has testified that the rates are, are, are the same. The rates where they're raising these two are the same as what the new hospital is, is charging. So there's a, you know... Okay. Can you just say that on the record? Yes? If you'd like, Mr. Mendiola.
I mean, I, I said that they have a higher fee schedule, charges than, than GMH.
Okay.
And they sign, and they sign with them.
Okay. So that's, so that's, that's the correction. So that's where, you know, that's where I'm at. And so GMH does not have any contract with any of the four, any of the four insurance companies. And that's something we've also been asking the hospital even prior to your time, you know, there is that, why don't we have an agreement? It's been since 2006 that it was going on a month to month. So how is this, you know, if you guys work on an agreement and get something signed, I mean, if they have higher rates at the other hospital, they've agreed to it, it's got to be a way that this is going to be acceptable as well. So, Mr. Mendiola, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to force you up, but please, if you, if you could. Can you just press and just introduce yourself, please, for the record?
Yes, honorable senators, I am Anthony Mendiola. I represent Stable Insurance. We're not as big as Calvo Seltzer Care or Take Care, but within our membership, we did our analysis as well for our utilization and we feel that this increase would have a significant impact on us as a payer as well as our members. If you please, Your Honor, I, I sent a written testimony as well, which you can review after this. And talking about the, the new hospital, our relationship with that new hospital is fluid. We've been in talks with them for, for so many months. And so to say that their rates are generally higher, it could be true, they're a new facility. But when we look at every single item that we deal with, the difference is that we have the prerogative and we have the privilege of negotiating with them specific items. So we have to be creative in coming up with rates, packages or arrangements so that the impact of, of the price would be controlled or mitigated. For GMH, where most of the people still go at this point, because I believe if you do an analysis, still most people go to GMH. And when, as a private payer, we say that we are impacted, we also have members who have their out of pocket, they have their co-share as well. And in relation to what Senator San Nicholas stated, and to underscore that, if you look at our smaller membership and say that we have at least 1,100 people who went to the emergency room in the past year, those 1,100 people receive services at the ER and in the ER, when you go there, you obtain or you use several services. You pay for the facility itself, you pay for the professional fee, for the imaging, labs, fluids, et cetera. But just for the use of the facility alone, just by being there in that cubicle, one citizen, one person right now will, will pay about $93, $100 just for that and then pay other amounts for the other services. What this increase would do will raise that fee to $340. So just for that, for that cubicle. So this will lead to a corresponding increase in, in their co-share as well, the out of pocket. So the insurance company will have its share, the patient will have his or her own share. And so we're not opposed to any, the, the increase that the hospital is proposing, we just are requesting for something gradual so that the impact will not be as much. The average increase that we saw from our analysis is about 277%. So if we can come up with a way to reduce that and gradually adjust that way, it's not just the insurance companies who would benefit, but the patients as well, who would have their out of pocket.
Yeah. And Tony, so will, will having a, well, will negotiating with the hospital and having a contract in place help in, in, in kind of stabilizing this, this increase?
Definitely. The advantage of that is if you have, let's say, 15,000 services and then you identify 400, then you can move and identify, okay, for, for these 20 codes, we agree to a certain level of increase because putting that emergency airway was only $5. But for other services, we can temper down the adjustment through the negotiation process.
Would you say though, and Doc, I'll get to you, but would you say though that having the rates, having the base be what it is that they're proposing now, make that be the starting point of your negotiations with them? Because what they're saying here is that these rates, you know, they're just bringing it up to what it should be today. You know, the intubation, I mean, I used that because it was used earlier, was, is being charged at five whatever now, and they're saying, I don't know how much they're, they're char, they're, they're proposing to have a charge now. They're saying that's just the, the cost. I mean, that's just the standard of, of what it should be. I mean, that's the lowest, even, I guess, I think, Benita, you had, it's the lowest. So because, you know, we're trying to, and we've been, believe me, even when before they've submitted, trying to figure out how we can work something out that, you know, we still need to do this, but work it out with, with putting language that, that would finally get, you know, the hospital and insurance companies to work out an agreement. But having this as the, as the base, as a starting point.
When you say as a base, you're referring to us implementing this setup?
In, in the spirit of negotiate and, and in working with insurance company, when we open up the urgent care, we put, we, we, we were at the table, we had a discussion about what we were going to charge, we had a discussion what, what was excluded, you know, we've been working with insurance company. When we talk about setting these fees for the ER, I don't think it's fair to make a statement that this is going to be for all cubicles. This 300, $400 charge may be for a telemet, you know, monitor bed one, two, three that requires intensive care. Those are part of basically what we would negotiate with insurance company and, and work with insurance company, just like we did in urgent care when we said, if it meant basically ordering a test outside of the urgent care level, then the default to ER. So, you know, again, we, we have been working. We're setting a fee schedule that not, that does not mean that this insurance company are not going to be participating in, in, in further negotiation. You know, we, we want to work with insurance company and we did in the spirit, follow the spirit in, in the urgent care setup. You know, in establishing these fees for the ER, we're not going to, for every person that comes in the ER is going to get a $93 charge. They won't pay for that, but for those that are $400 charged, but for those that require really intensive care level in, in monitored beds and we have one trauma rooms that, that need $400 charge for being in the trauma room. You know, that, that, that's an ER observation time.
Forgive me, but I'm just looking at this like, there's like 10 ER proposed increases. You're ta, I see 93 going to 333.
That's, that's one, that's, that's...
But I don't see ER observation room having trauma bed...
No, but, but I'm saying that charge is really for that trauma bed, for the intense, you know, that's, that's how normally followed, that's what's followed in the community as far as, as...
But to have the observation, then all the services are on top of that?
Yes, yes, yeah, because they're, they're being monitored in a bed. They're basically being monitored.
So the basic bed is 333. The intubation will add another 129.
Right, 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 right.
The...
For, for, for that, that, that trauma room.
If the poor thing needs a, a defibrillator, it's another $500 on top of that.
Right, right, right.
If they need to be on monitor, it's going to be another charge on top of that.
Right.
So this, the, the observation bed is the lower, is the least amount, just to come in and be told, you should never have come in here, but we're going to charge you 333.
No, 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 these are for trauma patients or basic patients that need intensive care.
I, but it doesn't say that...
No, no, but I, I, I know, I know, Senator, but we've had the discussions before and we've nego, we have agreed on what would constitute appropriate charge for the $400, just like we did with appropriate charge for urgent care services.
And then maybe I don't understand, but then...
But we don't, if we don't have that charge in place, we can ne, we can never have that discussion.
So for the, the billers, who I've been trying to get for six years, what code are they going to put? There's only one code in here for observation bed.
No, we would designate certain beds, like we, we actually, we've talked about this. We would designate certain beds that would qualify, that where the application of this observation charge, you know, can be built. And that again is the trauma room, just like your, there's a bed charge for being ICU.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, just for this, I don't see any other charge besides the 300, the new 333. There's no, there's no delineation for a different kind of bed. There's only one observation bed.
Because maybe we're not going to charge for the other beds other than just a root of New York care. Again, it's, it's all in negotiations.
I just wanted to ask real quick, Mr. Chair, the Medicaid amount that GMH was supposed to receive for FY 2015, how much was that? Because the topic came up of government subsidy, either we charge this, the government subsidize, but the reality is that with our insurance patients going there, we're going to be subsidizing it on the back end instead of the front end. What's the, what's the, what's the Medicaid amounts that we should have brought in for 2015?
I can, I can...
About 30 million?
Yeah, no, no, I can give you what we collected.
Yeah, the, the gross and then the actual.
And if any of your staff want to come up too, they can come.
No, I have it here. I just have to find it. It's on my sheet. So Medicaid, the total billing for, for Medicaid is, let's see, 17, 17 million? Wait. I need to... The numbers are very small, so I have to make sure. No.
The numbers are very small.
No. Yeah. It's 30, no, it's 38, 38 million, the 17 was M I P. So we billed 38.8 million and the collection is 17.3, 3 million, that's what we collected.
But with that 38, that's, is that already the reconciled?
No, no, this, this is the, this is the one, how much we billed in FY 15 and we are working on the reconciliation process because there are back years that we have, that is showing that has not been received. So we are, we are going to be working with, with public health.
Yeah, that, that, that's a difference of $21 million all by itself, you know, and if this whole exercise is intended to bring in 24 million gross...
Wait a minute, Senator, you, you can't say that there's that difference because there, we are paid per diem rate and, and Medicaid and M I P is, mirrors how we get, mirrors Medicare.
All right. So if you billed that 38 million, how much would you have brought in if you had 100% rate of...
About half.
Well, you already brought in 17 million, that's 55%.
But you're forgetting that some of these are from previous years' collections.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is how much did you bill for FY 2015 versus how much you brought in?
I am, I am letting you, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's 38.8 million that we, we billed.
Okay. Now that 38.8 million that you billed, how much of that, if you were to receive 100% payment on those?
That would be about, it's, I mean, it varies because some of these are, are inpatients, some are outpatient, and the outpatient would get a higher, a higher reimbursement. For, for inpatient, we get per diem, so...
So your sheet there doesn't show you how much you should have gotten? So your sheet there doesn't show you how much you should have gotten and how much you actually got?
No, no, it's just, this sheet is just.
Well, there is part of the problem.
I mean, we can, we can come up with that. No, no, but we can come up with that analysis, I just don't have that here. But, you know, we can identify, okay, of this collection of 17, how much of this is FY 2015 account? We can come up with that, but, you know, for the purposes of this sheet that I have, this is the information that I have now.
And the reason why I bring this up is because, like I said in the last budget cycle, you know, a number came out of $24 million in Medicaid that the hospital was supposed to receive, they still didn't receive. You know, does that sound accurate? How much was the hospital supposed to have gotten in Medicaid for FY 2015 that it did not get? How much did we not provide that we probably could have?
You know, Senator, the Medicaid, it's a moving target because, you know, you have patients come in daily, so you don't, you don't know how much total.
How short are you in Medicaid? If we were to, if you were to get 100% of the Medicaid, how much are you, would you have gotten that you didn't get?
I can get that information.
Do you have an approximation, like out of 30 million, you only got 20, and you should have gotten another 10?
We have, we have gotten Medicaid, I mean, I mean, public health works with the hospital all the time, especially this year. I mean, they process the hospital claims as fast as they can process. They prioritize the hospital, that I know.
And I think also, Benita, over the years, we've did supplemental appropriations to Medicaid.
Yes, that's correct.
And we were specific that a portion, a large portion of it goes to, you know, to the hospital.
Yes. And in fact, the other providers are complaining because they don't, you know, because the hospital has, is, has been prioritized.
Well, I mean, I wish that we could have stronger figures to validate that because for me, I look at this whole thing and I see $160 million in billings and only $80 million in collections, a 50% collection rate. And we're all talking about what the rate should be, these are what the rates should be, but in my mind, the rate should be what the market's willing to bear. And if our collection rate is 50%, then either the market can't bear what the charges already are, or we're not collecting enough.
Senator, you know, no hospital collects 100% of their billing. There is contractual adjustments all the time.
Sure, so how do we compare?
It's hard to compare. We're a government hospital, and we are a fee-for-service, but yet, you know, Medicare pays what Medicare wants to pay.
It's always interesting how it's just impossible to find the right number when it's necessary to make a point.
And we mirror, Medicaid and M I P mirror how Medicare pays.
So.
I mean, if, for that matter, maybe we should change it and just have Medicaid and M I P pay the hospital the cost, because that's what it was before. It did not mirror Medicaid, I mean, Medicare before. But it was, it was just, I don't know when it was changed, but it was changed to mirror Medicaid, Medicare, and so we get reimbursed much lower.
Maybe I should ask the CEO, if this is something that he should know. Looking at the rate of collections of the hospital at 50%, what should it be as the chief executive of the hospital? What do you believe the rate of collection should be?
Okay. So you have Medicaid, you have Medicare, M I P is similar to Medicaid, you have commercial insurance, and you have self-pay. Every one of those categories is different in terms of how it works. So with Medicaid and with Medicare, we have a system here where we're paid a per diem rate. Over in the mainland, they're paid on a different basis. So to use the example of the 38 million and the 17, the 38 million is what our retail price is, whatever that, the intubation, or the observation bed, or the inpatient bed, whatever the retail price is, that's what shows up on what's billed. But our arrangement is, we're not paid on the basis of what the charges were paid on, which is based on Medicare. Okay? Now, it's different with commercial insurance companies. Overall, and so all those components, how it works here in Guam is a bit different than the mainland. But I will tell you, in the mainland, on average, 50% is very common. Sometimes it's 45, sometimes it's 55, but on average. And the reason over there, even though the total comes out about the same, the reason over there is very large amounts of their business are negotiated either as a percentage of the total charge, or just on a D R G basis, we'll pay you this amount for this service period. It doesn't matter what your retail charge is. Now, where it comes into play here, and I very much appreciate the illustrations you used of cancer, because in our friends here, Jeff, and Select Care, and Staywell, and the others, of course, we will come to some reasonable arrangement. But the people who I think we're all concerned about are those in the self-pay category that are not with an insurance company, okay? And so, you know, hospital business is kind of like cars. You have a retail price, and then you have a smaller price that you really get paid for. So the people that are self-pay have, they end up, it's tough because they're dealing with that retail price, and, you know, they're not under any arrangement with Medicare or Take Care, where there's a negotiated lower amount. So they have, and the same problem exists over in the mainland. You know, the people that are self-pay in California, or in Michigan, or wherever, and as healthcare prices have increased, this is why so many people in America have, they're not able to afford things, and that's why Obamacare went into effect. But to answer the question, 50% is about the norm, okay? But how it shakes out with those different components is different there than here.
Before we adjourn, I really do think one thing needs to be clear for the listening audience. Even if the legislature were to approve these rates, even if we were to approve, or let this lapse, this Guam legislature cannot affect the Medicare rate payment. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, don't just nod your head.
That is correct.
And currently, the federal law is, because you guys have been trying to work your T E F A changes, that there's four jurisdictions that are stuck with this very low rate. All the other hospitals in the United States can negotiate different things. But by federal statute, not because this Guam legislature didn't want to do it, by federal statute, we are different.
That is correct.
With one comment, we still have to identify our costs and make a request for adjustments in what we get from Medicare, if we can show that our cost is where it's at. So if we don't raise our rates and show that it is our cost, then we won't increase our cost reports, and we may not get more adjustments.
But the T E F A rate is different from the T E F A rate, the rates that they get in the states. I just want it very clear to the audience out there, that it is not this legislature that is making it a, whatever that bed paid.
But it is this legislature that set the hospital to be reimbursed using Medicare rates, I mean, yeah, Medicare rates for Medicaid and M I P, right? The hospital didn't set that. The hospital wants fee for service.
And would you be able to get that Medicare the way the current federal statute is?
No, but what if you change Medicaid and M I P?
But do, does this Guam legislature have control over Medicaid, or is that also federal? Maybe we can have control over M I P.
So maybe at least start with M I P.
All right, well, then at least get that straight, Benita.
Half the hospital paid fee for service under M I P.
Because, as I pointed out to you in a previous hearing, that you didn't realize, it was by federal statute, the T E F A rate for Guam is different.
I understand that.
Well, now, thankfully.
Okay, so if there's no other questions from the senators here, and is there anything, Mr. Larson? Anything you want to close out?
Well, I just want to point out that, you know, Guam's moving in the opposite direction of where the states are moving, and that is, the states have employer and individual mandates that have a safety net. And what we're talking about here is pushing a safety net to Medicaid and M I P, which is pushing it closer to insolvency because the match rates are even impossible for us to hit. So the point is that as the hospital increases the fees, it will have a disproportionate impact on commercial insurance, and more and more patients will be paying a greater share because the only way that you can rectify, you know, commercial insurance viability is start to push more and more of the co-insurance to the patient. So GovGuam, for example, has an 80% co-insurance plan. So what you're going to see is, rates go up, whether it's G R M C or G M H, and that's just going to go straight to the patient or the commercial insurance. As we just discussed, Medicaid, M I P, Medicare, isn't going to be, in fact, impacted by the rates. So the analysis that they're saying, sure, that might be what they proposed the increase to raise is 15 or 17 million dollars, but in truth, the impact's going to be felt by those who pay the proportionately higher share, and that's the commercially insured patients. And I just want to end with that. Thank you, Senator.
But I want to make a comment that the 3 Ms. are going to be impacted for the outpatient services. So it's not generally, I mean, it's not necessarily true that, you know, 3 Ms. are not going to be impacted. They will be.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn, it's 6:51. Thank you.